Call our June 4 meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Wallman.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wheaton.
Here.
Councilman Walker.
Here.
All present?
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite those at West Houston to stand for the indication given tonight by Pastor Steve Taboo at the River Church, followed by a pledge of allegiance to the United States flag.
Lord, it's a prayer. Most gracious heavenly Father, we really come before you today just asking for you to intervene here, God. Crazy, crazy world we're living in, but God, you've got it covered. You know what's going on. You've seen the Roman Empire come and go. You've seen the hordes of the Huns attacked. Or you've seen all the craziness of the world, and you're still on the throne. So we come humbly before you, and we ask that you would move on our behalf. We ask in Jesus' name that you would put a hedge of angels around our community and protect us from the evil one. We ask in Jesus' name that you would stand on our behalf for our children, our grandchildren, for ourselves. We ask, Lord, that you would allow us to be a light to the nation and that we would be a testimony to all in the nation. We ask, Lord, in this difficult season, Lord, as we're dealing with real issues, God, we ask that our hearts will be pliable to what you would say and how you would want to use us to love those that are hurting. And we pray for the families of all those across the nation that are hurting today, that you would be the God of comfort to them. We pray that in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
In the name of the United States of America. And to the republic of which is the land, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would consider approval of the agenda as presented. Are there any changes or additions?
Yes, Mayor, we have two additions to the agenda. We'd like to add that 7D consider authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Office of Criminal Justice Programs, renewing the Victim of Crimes Act. This is sponsored by Chief Randy Evans of the Police Department. Then 7, would they consider resolution R 200610 promoting diversity and inclusion in the community? And the sponsor for that is Councilman Miller.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All votes checked. You can say aye.
Fabius, both motion carries.
Thank you.
No, we're not using them.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Okay. Under O 7, would they consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on May 21st? Is there a motion?
Amen.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All vote? Aye.
Fabius, both motion carries.
Thank you. Under the consent agenda, 6A, Saturday, 7/2/2020 for a public hearing on ordinance O 200612, rezoning of approximately 4.86 acres portion of Act 067A Group Out Parcel 40 from CR Regional Commercial to RD Single Family and Duplex Residential. 6B, Saturday, 7/2/2020 for a public hearing on ordinance O 200613, request to close abandoned and declared surplus property of portion of undeveloped popular Avenue right-of-way. And 6C, consider awarding bids for Transformers, LED shoebox lot, decorative poles and fireglass poles to the electric department. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Amen.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Fabius, both motion carries.
Thank you. Under 7A. Hold a public hearing considering first reading ordinance O 200608. An ending of budget of the general state street aid solid waste, animal control and general improvement bond funds of the city of Cookeville for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020. Ms. Emmett.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, this ordinance amends five of our funds for the current fiscal year. For the general fund, it increases our budget of revenue by $982,000 and $18,000. The majority of that is grant revenue that were granted or awarded to us during the year. $150,000 in property taxes and then two state shared revenues, income tax and excess tax, $50,000 and $80,000. And on the expenditure side for the general fund, it increases the budget of expenditures by $968,503 with a net increase to the general fund balance of $13,515. Again, the largest portion of the increase in expenditures there relates to the grants. $810,003 is all the grant expenditures for those grants. And then the rest of those are property tax, property assessor increase cost of $50,000, workers' comp claim $60,000 for the police department, and some salary and wages adjustment for planned and unplanned, planned, unplanned retirement for employees. And planning department salaries and wages, reducing it for $23,000 for turnover and unkinded positions and using that to purchase some software furniture and equipment for their new employees. The second fund is the state street aid fund. We're increasing revenues there, budgeted revenues by $38,777 for a grant that we received through the federal government through the emergency watershed program and increasing expenditure or decreasing expenditures there of $22,270. Increasing utilities line item for traffic signals by $10,000, reducing salt purchases by $50,000, and increasing grant expenses that were used on the Boyd Ferris Road repairs by $17,730. Change in fund balance there is $61,037. The third fund is the solid waste fund. And this amendment will increase budget of revenues there by $59,500 in charges for services and increase expenditures there by $50,000, mostly in capital, the savings that we had in the garbage truck then we used to purchase the glass truck, and we had to purchase additional dumpsters and roll-off containers. Net change in the fund balance there is $9,500. The fourth fund is the animal control fund. We're increasing budget of revenues there by $35,000, again, a grant that we were awarded during the year from the Petco Foundation. Increase in expenditures there by $95,000, the grant expenditures of $35,000. And then we recently approved an addition down there of $100,000, and we're hoping to get started this month with this increased expenditures for capital items by $60,000, thus reducing the fund balance there by $60,000. And the final fund for an amendment, the general improvement bond fund. There will be no bond issue in fiscal year 20, so we're reducing the bond proceeds by $15 million. And the offset to that is reducing the expenditures that bond would be used for by $14,802,000 and the bond issue cost of $198,000. But increasing the cost for one of our other bond issue costs or bond projects was the Bennett Road Tennessee Avenue mitigation by $40,000. That's reducing the fund balance in that fund by $40,000. That's the amendments that we have to the fiscal year 20 budget, and I would recommend your approval.
Okay. At this time, we'll open the public hearing portion leading for these budget minimum items. Do we have anyone that'd like to speak about any of these matters? All right. We'll close the public hearing portion. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Fabius, both motion carries.
Thank you. 7D, hold a public hearing considering first reading ordinance O 200609, adopting a tax levy for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year. Ms. Emmett.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance and the next two this evening all relate to the adoption of a budget for fiscal year 21. This first ordinance will establish the property tax rate for fiscal year 21, which is for the 2020 taxes. We are recommending no tax increase. The tax will remain the same at 99 cents. The total tax rate of 99 cents will be allocated in 72 cents to the general fund, 4 cents to the debt service fund, 15 cents to the transportation infrastructure fund, 3 cents to economic development, 1 cent to quality of life, and 4 cents to solid waste. This allocation varies from prior year as we were recommending a penny increase to the general fund and a penny decrease to the economic development fund. Estimated penny rate used in preparing a budget was $89,196 and projected property tax revenue is $8,831,200. This slide shows you the increase, the 10-year growth in the penny rate. In 2010, the penny rate was $65,540, and the rate we're using in preparing the budget was $89,196, an increase of 36.1%. And this slide shows you the 2019 property tax rate, how the city of Cookeville's rate compared to others within the state. When the lower half of that graph, just below a dollar. And this is a historical summary of the city's tax rate. We did increase the tax rate last year by 15 cents to fund the new transportation infrastructure fund. And again, there is no recommended increase in the property tax rate, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing portion of meeting about this matter. Would anyone like to speak about anything you've just heard on this matter? All right. We'll close the public hearing. You hear a motion?
Amen.
Second motion, a second. Any discussion among the council? All right. All votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Fabius, both motion carries.
Thank you. 7C, hold a public hearing considering first reading ordinance O 200610, authorizing appropriations for financial aid to public service nonprofit and charitable organizations for the 2021 fiscal year. Ms. Emmett.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance appropriated $753,870 in support for fiscal year 21. $738,620 will come from the general fund and $15,250 from our utility departments. We did accept applications this year, but due to the pandemic, the nonprofit review committee did not meet. And due to the unknown economic impact of the pandemic, it seems appropriate not to recommend any increases in funding. We did ask the committee to review all the applications and provide feedback on any concerns. We had no new agencies apply for funding, and the committee members concurred with the recommendation. And I'll read through these briefly. This appropriates $330,000 to the Putnam County Library, $50,000 to the Cookeville Senior Citizen Center, $28,000 to the Upper Cumberland Regional Airport, $105,000 to the Putnam, Cookeville, Putnam County Chamber of Commerce, with $50,000 designated to the Highlands Economic Partnership and $25,000 designated for workforce development, $25,400 appropriated to the Emergency Management Agency, $40,306 appropriated to City State with $15,306 restricted to be used for fall fund test, $43,149 to the Tennessee Rehabilitation Center, $6,265 appropriated to the Tennessee Central Heritage Rail Trail Authority, $20,000 to the Cookeville Arts Council, $1,600 to the Cumberland Arts Society, $9,000 to Kip Putnam County Beautiful Clean Commission, $12,000 to Genesis House, $12,000 to Helping Hands of Putnam County, $9,450 to WCTE Public Television, $5,000 to the H.G. Stevens Center for Child Abuse, $6,000 to Kip Putnam, Inc., $15,000 to the 13th Judicial District Recovery Court Program to be used exclusively for drug court and veterans treatment court, $6,000 to the Upper Cumberland Child Advocacy Center, $2,250 to the Cookeville Children's Museum, $4,000 to the Court Appointed Special Advocates Program, $1,000 to the Veterans Honor Guard, $8,250 to the Upper Cumberland Family Justice Center, $3,000 to the Putnam County Imagination Library Program, $1,000 to Cookeville Impact, Inc., $3,000 to Plateau Mental Health Path Program, and $7,200 to the Biz Foundry. Again, the ordinance appropriates $753,870, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing portion of meeting about this matter. Would anyone like to speak about this? We'll close the public hearing portion to their motion.
Amen.
Second. Motion, a second. Any discussion?
I just want to thank the city again for donating this money to the nonprofits around here. They all do something. They're all great assets to our community, so thank y'all again for doing the work for them.
And thanks to the citizen committee. Although they didn't meet this year, they did meet last year, and these appropriations were based off their meeting last year. So we appreciate their service as well. All right. All votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Fabius, both motion carries.
Thank you. 7D, hold a public hearing considering first reading ordinance O 200611, adopting the city of Cookeville, Tennessee annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021. Ms. Emmett.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance provides for the adoption of a fiscal year 21 budget for 18 different funds, including our utility departments and Cookeville Regional Medical Center. The ordinance itself is in the format required by the controller of the office, and in addition to the budget information, includes information on debt payment, capital projects, and fund balances. I have slides for each fund, and we were going to start with the general fund. The general fund is projected to start the year with a fund balance of $19,852,000. Revenue and other sources of fund are $29,119,688. Operating expenditures are budgeted at $27,477,595. Capital expenditures in this budget are $2,178,408, bringing this total budget deficit of $536,315 and projecting reducing the fund balance at the end of next year to $19,316,497. The budget we are recommending for adoption is the alternate that we presented to you on day two of our work session last month. This budget does include longevity pay and a merit increase of up to 2% for our employees. However, I have made one change to the budget, and that is that we are no longer proposing that one-time transfer of $300,000 from the Workers' Comp General Liability Fund and have increased the budget amount for local taxes, specifically sales tax, by $300,000. So the total available funds remains at $29,119,688. Our operating revenue, this slide chart shows you the sources of our operating revenue. Again, our significant dependence on local option sales tax, 49% of that pie. Property taxes are 24% of that pie, and we've already discussed property taxes this evening. So let's talk a little bit more about sales tax. This budget includes a budget amount for sales tax of $13,396,560. That is an actual decrease of the current year budget of 5.5% and a decrease of fiscal year 2019 to actual of 3.96%. A conservative amount considering the economic outlook that is unknown to us at this point in time, but we feel confident in budgeting that number for our budget. And just to remind you of other sources and available funds that are included in this general fund budget. One-time governor's state grant, Cookeville's allocation of $780,438 with no match required, and we intend to use that, proposing using that for public safety equipment. A capital outlay note of $500,000, which will be proposed to use for public works equipment. And the hotel motel tax that was collected this fiscal year, we're proposing spending that next year on improvements at the youth fields and the base facilities. Again, to summarize the revenues in the general fund, $27,400,87, a decrease of 3.5% over this year's budget. And then other sources, the capital outlay note of $500,000, transfers in, $6,265 from the quality of life fund, economic development fund, $75,000, the one-time governor's grant of $780,438, and the hotel motel tax collected this year should be spent next year of $357,898, bringing our total available funds in this budget for the general fund of $29,119,688. General fund expenditures. Total operating expenditures is $27,384,595, an actual decrease of 1.31% over this year's budget. Capital expenditures in this budget are $2,178,408, and transfers out of this budget to the animal control fund, $88,000, and to the tree board, $5,000, bringing total expenditures and transfers out to $29,656,300. A look at our operating expenditures by type. We are in the service industry, so 78% of this operating budget is salaries and benefits. And on the personnel side, this budget funds 280 full-time positions in the general fund and position citywide, 440 positions. There is a new physician budget in the police department for a communications admin person. This budget, as I mentioned earlier, includes a 2%, up to a 2% merit increase in longevity pay for our employees. Employee evaluations are performed during their anniversary month, and the merit increases are effective on their anniversary date. Longevity is paid during the month of November after five years of service. Longevity amount is $100 per year up to maximum of 30 years of service or $3,000. This budget funds our required contribution to TCRF. This is actuarially determined by TCRF, and the rate is 20.46% with no change from the current year's amount, and additional 3.5% for public safety bridge benefit. We adopted the hybrid plan for new hires after '71-19. The contribution rate for them will be at 9% with an additional 0.85% for public safety. And a look at the operating expenditures by department. Our largest departments, fire and police, total 53% of our budget. And just very quickly, the operating budget for each department is $9,297,420. Capital for that department is $338,225, and that includes the purchase of eight patrol vehicles and with their equipment and install, and we intend on using that governor's, one-time governor's grant to help pay for that equipment. Fire department has an operating budget of $5,324,560. Capital there is $227,600, and again, using the one-time governor's grant, we're going to purchase a generator for Station 4, replace our defibrillators at $150,000, and then a compressor for the breathing apparatuses of $40,000, and roof repairs at Section 4 for $16,600. Public Works Department has an operating budget of $3536,730. Capital there is $527,000, and that includes a loader, a dozer, and a traffic bucket truck, and those will be financed with a capital outlay note. Leader Services Department has an operating budget of $19,947,55. Capital there is $380,000 and includes parking lot and lighting at the youth fields and lighting sensing and seating at the Bay Brew Fields, and we will be using the hotel motel tax proceeds from this year to finance that for next year. Parks and Maintenance Department has an operating budget of $1560,290. Capital there is $19,000 and includes $10,000 available for repairs at the senior citizens facility, which the city owns, and $9,000 for a zero term mower. The Coast Department has an operating budget of $955,840 and capital there is $36,583. This department includes our computer operations folks, and the $36,583 represents IT hardware and software that we're going to be purchasing, and it is cost shared with the utility department, so that's one force of the cost. The largest item there is updating our Microsoft Office software in 2019, and that would be $84,860 for that. The Planning Department has an operating budget of $616,450, and there is no capital required requested in the Planning Department. The general department of the general fund has an operating budget of $3449,930 and capital in this department is $650,000, and that includes $50,000 for foundation repairs for the front part of the building there, and then $600,000 to replace the HAC unit for this building. And we also have the transfer to the animal control board at $88,000 and transfer to the tree board of $5,000, and then the contribution to nonprofits, which we did in the previous ordinance, of $738,620. Again, to summarize the general fund. General fund has an operating surplus in the budget of $3,757, and then when you add the non-recurring capital expenditures and the one-time revenue, brings the total budget deficit to $536,315, and we're projected to end next fiscal year with a fund balance of $19,316,497. Any questions on the general fund, or I'll just keep going with the rest of them. Okay. State Street Aid is projected to start the year with a fund balance of $14,100. Revenue there, $2993,716, and expenditures are budgeted at $3547,533. The primary source of revenue for this fund is the gas tax that's shared with the state and also some grant revenue for some projects we've got going on. The state street aid fund expenditures of $3.5 million includes $825,000 for paving streets next year and $2.5 million in capital, which includes a $14,000 railroad safety project, which will be cost shared with the railroad, a patch truck, which replaces the 2006 truck for $185,000. And then we've got three large sidewalk projects that we're working on for a total of $2332,000. So we're going to reduce the fund balance in this fund by $553,000 and end next fiscal year with a projected fund balance of $847,000. The solid waste fund is projected to start the year with a fund balance of $1229,000. Revenue there is basically charges for services, and we do allocate 4 cents of the property tax to this fund. So revenue there, $239,000. Expenditures for this fund are budgeted at $2145,000. That includes operating expenditures of $1.6 million and capital of $496,000. The capital funded in this budget includes dumpsters and roll-off containers at $110,000, replacing residential carts at $36,000, purchase of a roll-off truck of $190,000, and purchase of a rush truck, $150,000. The transportation fund was established last year with 15 cents of the property tax. It's projected to start the fiscal year with a fund balance of $1339,000. And if you recall, when we set that tax rate last year, we designated the 5 cents of that much remaining in this fund for pay-as-you-go projects. So to start that year, that amount is $445,319. The revenue is 15 cents of the property taxes budgeted at $1344,000. Expenditures and transfers are at $1101,50, and those include the following projects. Head Street improvements at $600,000, South Walnut Avenue improvements, $150,000, Commerce Avenue Extension, $150,000, West Stevens Street improvements, $100,000, East Hudson Street improvements, $100,000, and then other expenditures, $150,000.
All about engineering.
Right. Engineering costs.
Actual construction.
Okay. The general improvement bond fund is where we account for our large capital projects and puts the proceeds of any bonds that we issue. It's projected to start the year of $1680,000, and we are proposing a new debt issue of up to $19 million this coming fiscal year. And expenditures and transfers out would be $19,854,000, thus reducing the fund balance in this fund by $849,000, leaving $831,000 at the end of next fiscal year. The proposed bond issue or debt issue of $19 million is to construct the new police station. We've got it currently bid out, so hopefully that'll be moving forward through June. And we're also looking to replace two fire apparatuses. We have a 1972 aerial truck we want to replace and a 1994 rescue camper that needs to be replaced. As we move forward on these projects, though, any new bond issue that we do would have to come to you for additional approval. And we do have, the $1.6 million that we're starting here with is really remaining proceeds from other bond issues, so $204,000 in expenditures there are to be spent on all the parks. Cedar Street improvement, $461,875, and then $20,000 on Tennessee Avenue for litigation. So, but those are coming from proceeds from other bond issues. Then the debt service fund is the fund that we pay back our debt that we borrow. It's projected to start the year with $13,814,000. The revenue going into this fund, we allocate 4 cents of the property tax to this fund. So we've got the property tax, we've got the in lieu of tax from Cookeville Regional of $700,000 in there. And we also allocate to this fund the state shared sales tax. So we're budgeting projected revenue next year of $3761,000. The expenditures we're budgeting next year are primarily our principal and interest payments on our debt, and that's $3524,000. Thus, we're looking to increase next year's fund balance by $237,305 and ending next fiscal year with over $14 million in our fund balance and our debt service fund. This is our debt currently outstanding in the general obligation debt. We currently have $16,406,000 outstanding. Two of those are notes on the bottom. Those are variable rate debts with the Tennessee Unitable Bond Fund. And the four on the top are actual bond notes that we had done of $14,805,000. And this slide shows you the current debt service of that debt outstanding. And that arrow on the top shows you 3.7 million is actually what we budgeted in revenue going into this fund in the next year. So you can see the debt capacity you have. The debt service is well below the revenue that's coming in there. But if we didn't borrow any more money, all the debt that we currently have would be paid off in 2031. So this slide looks a little busy, but this shows the impact of all the proposed debt issues that we're proposing for 2001. The columns in blue represent the current debt outstanding. The green represents if we do $10 million of that '19 this fall. And then the purple is if we do the other nine million then next spring. And then the three little orange ones on the top is that three-year capital outlay note we talked about. And the blue line across there is our projected revenues into this fund. So you can see the revenues for, that we're budgeting for next year is about 3.7 million. So for about three years, the debt service payments coming out of there will exceed the revenues going in there and will reduce our reserve. But then after that, it goes back down. So with the debt issues proposed, and this slide shows you our fund balance in that fund compared to the debt service. So with the debt issues that we have proposed, the fund balance will be reduced for about three years, but only down to about $11.9 million in 2024. It is recommended that we maintain a fund of balance above one year's debt service. And the debt service in that year would be about $4.2 million. So the fund balance remains well above that level. We have a very financially solid debt service fund. We have the capacity to do the planned debt issues and still maintain a healthy fund balance. When we did our 2017 bond issue, Moody's had upgraded our bond rating from a AA2 to a AA2 from a AA3 citing our solid financial position and manageable debt burden. So when we get, like I said, when we get ready to do these next bond issues, we'll bring them back to you for your approval. So the next fund is the Economic Development Fund. We are allocating three cents of the property tax to this fund. And it's projected to start the year with a fund balance of $1.6 million. Revenue, $298,900. And expenditures and transfers out of $316,100. Thus reducing the fund balance of this fund by $17,200 and ending next fiscal year with $1.6 million. The expenditures of $316,100 include that $120,000 SAIC wage incentive contractor agreement that we had. There's one payment remaining on that. And then the $75,000 in infrastructure projects includes $50,000 for Stewart Comatary Road relocation and $25,000 for parking lot construction on the property that we purchased on Cedar Avenue. Quality of Life Fund is projected to start the year with $258,481. We allocate one penny of the property tax to this fund. So $565,500 is the budgeted revenue there, which includes the property tax, the $100,000 Boyd Foundation Grant that we were awarded to help build the dog park. And we are proposing that the hotel motel tax for next fiscal year be allocated to this fund. So that's part of those revenues too. Expenditures for this fund include $592,600 and transfers out of $6,265. The expenditures include the Ken Creek Park Dog Park. And then $435,000 in Parks and Recreation Improvement, including $75,000 for planning and engineering to look at the Ken Creek Park Lake Shoreline. And then $360,000 for various projects using the hotel tax. And then I've got a slide to summarize, and I showed this to you last month, the hotel motel tax. We're expected to collect this year about $360,000. And per the ordinance, that had to remain in the General Fund. And then we have proposed projects next year in the General Fund to spend that. And estimated collections for this next fiscal year, about $360,000 we're proposing putting in the Quality of Life Fund. And the projects there out of the Quality of Life Fund include refurbishing and repainting the depot steam engine caboose, adding shade to the skate park, adding shade structures for the bleachers at Sportsplex. And then getting started after we do the engineering on the shoreline at Ken Creek Lake to get started on the restoration work there. So that asset takes up all that revenue that will be coming in from the hotel motel tax for the two fiscal years. The Employees Health Insurance Fund. We maintain a self-insured plan for our employees and our retirees. It's projected to start the year with a fund balance of $4,602,000. Revenues going into this fund are basically premiums paid by the city, our employees and our retirees. And that's projected to be $537,000. So that's what we have available as our expenditures next year. Those expenditures include premium and admin fees. We use Blue Cross Blue Shield as our third-party administrator. And then we have a stop-loss contract that we carry to protect against large claims. And then life insurance. And then actuarial services, the other expense at $11,500. And that leaves $4329,500 for claims next year. The Workers' Comp Liability Fund is going to start the year with a projected $906,000. Revenues are basically reimbursement from other funds. This fund kind of functions as an internal service fund. So that would be $661,000. Expenditures are the workers' comp and general liability claims of $650,000. And then $120 in the admin. We're projected to add $10,880 to the fund balance next year, keeping it at $917,286. Tree Board Fund is projected to start the year with a fund balance of $12,406. Revenues and transfers in are $9,070. They're proposing expenditures of $13,180, reducing that fund balance by $4,110,000, leaving $8,296,000. They have two grants that they are working on. One has been approved and one's in the process that they've applied for to plant trees at Tennessee Avenue and at the median center on the street. Animal Control Fund accounts for the operations of the Cookfield-Putnam County Animal Shelter. They're going to start the year with a fund balance of $1414,000. Because again, that includes the Airs Request Money of $1.2 million. Revenues and transfers in include $176,000 in government support. And adoption fees for service and donations makes up the rest of the revenues for a total budget of $409,350. Expenditures for operations are $455,264. Their operating expenditures are budgeted at $415,264. And we budgeted $40,000 in capital because the addition to the facility is going to carry in the next fiscal year. So we did a budget of $60,000 this year, $40,000 going in for next year. And the requested governmental contributions, this shelter could not operate without the support of our other government partners. Putnam County allocates $88,000 to the shelter. Monterey, $6,600. Algood, $8,100. And Baxter, $3,150. The Drug Fund is projected to start the year with a fund balance of $357,826. Revenue there budgeted at $47,000. Expenditures, $199,800. So we're projecting to reduce the fund balance there by $152,800. The expenditures there include $20,000 for drug investigation, $100,000 to purchase vehicles, $17,000 for a key management control, $38,000 for other small items of equipment, a vehicle lift for $7,000, and drug enforcement equipment for $14,000. The Customer Service Department also operates kind of as an internal service fund. They provide meter reading and billing services for our utility departments. So they have no cash reserves to start the year. Expenditures are $1528,190, including meter reading expense of $417,860, customer service expense of $132,330, and capital expense of $78,000. And whatever they spend is billed back to the utility department. So the revenue coming in there is reimbursement from the utility department. Capital here includes replacing two vehicles for our meter readers at $58,000. And $20,000 to do possible programming improvements for our software that we purchased. So the Electric Department, their budget for 2021 is starting the year with cash reserves of $13,714,000. Budget of revenue is $57,074,000. Add-back depreciation and amortization of $2.7 million. They've got expenses budgeted at $57,769,000. So they're projected to add to their cash balance next year, $2,95,108,000. And end the year with $15,809,000. Their operating expense is $53,580. Maintenance expense, $14,200,000. Equipment and materials, $18,940,000. Debt service payments, principal and interest, $892,000. And the Electric Department has two debt issues outstanding for a total of $4100,000. And they are not proposing any rate increase next year. Water Quality Control Department. They're projected to start the year with cash reserves of $7,738,000. Revenue for that department is $18,61,500. Sorry, I clicked on it there. And he is proposing borrowing $800,000 through the state revolving loan fund. And add-back depreciation and amortization, $3.7 million there. And their budgeted expenditures, expenses are $23,192,988. So he's proposing reducing his cash next year by $611,000 and ending the year with cash reserves of $7126,000. His operating and debt service expenditures or expenses are budgeted at $14,748,000. And he's got capital budgeted, we've got capital there budgeted, $8443,000. And they do have one debt issue outstanding for $1236,368,000. And because they have such a large amount of capital, I wanted to include this slide that we had showed you last month of what makes up that $8443,700. $4 million of it is sewer plant rehab project. $950,000 was that Little Creek pump station replacement project. And $800,000, the water plant design project. The Gas Department. They're projected to start the year with cash reserves of $16,230,000. Budget of revenue for next year is $10,139,000. Add-back to provision for depreciation of $625,000. And less their expenses budgeted for next year of $10,46,000. They're looking to add to their cash balance next year, $718,000. And end next fiscal year with cash reserves of $16,948,000. The Gas Department has no debt outstanding, they are debt-free. The Cookfield Regional Medical Center budget. They are budgeting operating revenue of $336,692,000. Less their operating expenses of $315,341,000. They've got non-operating net expenses, $16,021,000. So their projected net income next year in their budget is $5329,212,000. Some other items listed there that the controllers office wanted to see in the budget is their depreciation and amortization is $13.8 million. The payment in lieu of taxes to the city of Cookfield, $700,000. Their departmental capital expenses is $12,450,000. Expansion capital expenses, $5,725,000. Their debt service payments principal is $3277,000. And their interest payments on their debt is $1884,000. And they are projecting to end next year with cash reserves of over $60 million. And their debt outstanding at July 1st to start the year is $62,525,000. So that is all the funds I have for you. This slide just kind of summarizes it there, it's very small and hard to see. But the total transfers out and proposed expenses or expenditures for all those funds is $490,997,000. That's you have, we have to answer any questions you have, but that's all the funds and I would recommend.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open a public hearing for some meeting about the budget for next year. If you want to have anything you'd like to say or question. I will close the public hearing with our motion.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions in public speaking? All the members say aye.
Aye.
Fabian Fosch, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Senator, consider authorizing city manager to execute a contract for stop-loss insurance coverage.
Mayor and council members. The city has a self-insured health plan for our employees, retirees, and their dependents. We cover about 1,170 lives. We carry stop-loss coverage to protect the plan against large claims. That's both medical and prescription drugs. The current policy that we have expires June 30th is carried with Blue Re, which is a Blue Cross Blue Shield company. The specific attachment point is $160,000 and aggregating specific deductible at $60,000. We have used the policy and have been reimbursed over $190,000 in 2016, $133,000 in 2018, $107,000 in 2019. And just through April of this year, we have received reimbursement of claims of $61,371,000. Blue Re has given us three options for renewal. And all three options have increases in premiums. Blue Cross Blue Shield has identified five claimants on our plan with ongoing serious medical conditions. And they are projecting significant claims for them. This has made it difficult for any other carriers to provide quotes on the coverage. So we are recommending a one-year renewal of Blue Re with option one. The coverage will remain the same with $160,000 specific attachment points and $60,000 aggregate specific deductible. Premiums will increase from $21.48 to $26.75 for single coverage. And from $58.94 to $73.75 for family coverage. Estimated increase in premiums is $69,292 for the year, which is about a 25% increase. This recommendation is also supported by our underwriters at McGriff Insurance or brokers. I recommend your approval for the city manager to execute a contract with Blue Re for fiscal year 21 with the coverage and premiums as noted in option one.
Thank you for the motion.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All the members say aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
Fabian Fosch, motion carries.
Thank you. Senator Al, consider awarding bid for HVAC upgrades for City Hall for meals.
Mayor and council members, on May 27th, we opened bids here at City Hall for HVAC upgrades. The upgrades include converting our current heating and cooling system to a BRF, which is a variable rate, variable refrigerant system. In August of last year, the council approved an agreement with Mathit Office Engineering, professional services that included designing the HVAC system and related electrical improvements preparing all necessary bid documents and project management. Bids for HVAC improvements were submitted by Carlisle Mechanical, Charles Stone Heating and Cooling, and CHC Mechanical. Bids were solicited for a base bid and three add alternatives. Alternative one is for performance and claimant bond. Alternative two is for a one-year maintenance agreement. And alternate three was for ceiling and lighting replacement in areas affected by the project. Mathit Office had recommended not to include the bond requirement. When you add alternates two and three, CHC Mechanical contractors is a low bidder. Mathit Office recommended awarding the contract to CHC Mechanical with the base bid of $497,000 plus alternates two and three, which brought the total contract amount to $517,200. I discussed this with our attorney. And he recommends including the alternate for the bond, which was alternate one. That would bring the total to $522,120. CHC Mechanical would still be the low bidder, including all three alternates. And I would recommend awarding the bid to the low bidder, total bidder, CHC Mechanical, which includes the base bid and alternates one, two, and three for a total bid of $522,120.
I think it's our motion.
So many.
Motion second, any questions? When would they proceed to bid?
They indicated they're ready to go. We'll have to get the contract signed, which I'll work on that tomorrow. We have the contract ready, but I'll meet with CHC tomorrow and see if they're ready to go. We'll have to get the, since we originally thought we weren't going to include the bond, I'll have to see if that's going to take them some time to do that.
How long will it take to complete?
Um, they've asked, we've got 120 days in the agreement. There's two big phases of it. One is installing the VRF system. The other... One is installing the VRF system, the other, which we expect that to be done within a couple of months. The other is moving those big coolers and chillers out there. That's going to take a little while. So that's the second phase of it.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Fabierto, motion carries.
Thank you. 7A, consider authorizing the city manager entering into contract with the criminal justice programs, OCJP renewing the Victims' Crimes Act voca grant for the police department chief.
Mayor and council, you may recall back in March, I think March the 5th, council meeting, you approved us applying for this grant. It has now been awarded. We received a notification this morning. Slide is pretty much the same. It's a voca grant, Victim Against Crimes Act. It's administered by OCJP, which is the Office of Criminal Justice Programs. This grant actually funds our victim services coordinator. It's a two-year grant, subject to funding. First year, as you can see, $57,656. Second year, $54,073. We do have a 20% match. We meet that match for expenses, which is generally, we use a volunteers and interns at the university, and we also get to count our supervisory time. So we don't, technically, we don't have any cash involved. Recommend your approval. Thank you for your motion.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed.
Fabierto, motion carries.
Thank you. 7H, consider resolution R 20061, promote diversity and inclusion in the community. Councilman Miller.
Mr. Trump, Tuesday evening, we had our first violent attack in our city due to the horrific death of George Floyd. Tonight, I feel it's critical to recognize the importance of diversity and inclusion in our community. During my time as a law enforcement officer, I witnessed firsthand injustices through our judicial system. We witnessed another injustice of our judicial system with this attack Tuesday. The perpetrator of the attack, Kevin Fulham, appeared to choke an individual exercising their First Amendment right. Our amazing officers of the Cookville Police Department did their job. They arrested this gentleman. They charged him with aggravated assault. His bond, which is not determined by our city or our officers, was only set at $7,500. But due to his economic status, he was out of jail probably before the officer even was able to complete their report. There are people sitting in jails throughout our great nation right now with lesser offenses and lower bonds, but due to their economic status, they have to remain in jail, and that's not right. That's an example of systematic injustice. With that being said, I feel silence with the, silence with the cries from our African American community is complicity, and I feel that we shouldn't be complicit. So here's the resolution. Whereas with June 19th being the anniversary of the last emancipated African American slave from the Confederacy, and whereas the city of Cookville would like to recognize that black lives matter, now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Cookville, Tennessee, that our community will continue to promote diversity and inclusion in order to make Cookville a safe place for families, for our families regardless of race, to grow, learn, and succeed.
Thank you. Your motion.
Second.
Motion second.
Second.
Yeah, I forgot, I forgot some comments. You know, I've, well, many other members of our community are facing this kind of unfamiliar emotion this week. Any others in the community, these emotions are all too familiar. I do not desire much of what I feel, and I do not desire our future generation to have to experience this. I want our hearts to be filled with hope, as I seek out messages for hope this week for my own heart. For our community to prosper and for us to continue to describe our city as a safe and desirable place to call home, we need to acknowledge that racism and equality does exist in our community. I believe that members of our community should be treated with equality. We should be protected and guarded and not exploited by our laws. I desire to live in a place that accepts all of God's children. This resolution tonight will not resolve the systemic issues surrounding the entrenched racism affecting our country and our community, but it is my hope that it will be a small step forward to engage in a meaningful conversation to respond. I am here to listen, to do what I can as a member of the community and as a city council member to ensure a better future for everyone in our city.
Councilman Wallack, did you have anything?
Yes, I believe that this is, this resolution is a small step, but it's one that needs to be taken to show that black lives matter here in Cookville.
Thank you. I just want to say that I believe that God made all of us in His image and that everyone should have the same chance to live a life of freedom, of peace, of safety. I've seen the community come together, and recently, we have been a model of that for our country. So I hope again that we can come together now to show the country that we can be a community where diverse people can live together. I want our African American community to know that I'm here for you and I'm listening, and I'm doing that as a vice mayor, as a mom, as a wife, as a daughter, as a citizen of our community.
I'm thankful that while I know no community is perfect, our community is learning, taking every step possible to make sure that we continue to educate ourselves, listen, and learn from leadership in minority communities, and follow the guidance of those who can speak to helping our community be a safe, diverse place to live, work, and play. Our community has been blessed by a spirit of unity and cooperation. Look forward to seeing us respond in a healthy, peaceful way as we walk through these uncertain and volatile times. My prayer is that our community responds and is an example as a city on the hill. We will now, as always, ensure that our families, friends, and neighbors in all minority communities know that Cookville is truly a place to call home. We will, as a city, do everything within our power to ensure that law-abiding citizens are given every opportunity that is afforded them with human beings. Not only now, but at any time, we will not tolerate individuals who instigate or perpetrate hate, nor do we have a place for any kind of violence against anyone. We are blessed with outstanding law enforcement officers who daily protect everyone equally in our community. Now more than ever, our city, county, state, and country need to come together in unity and prayer. No matter our skin color, we're all created in God's image. Romans 12:21 says, "Don't let evil deceive you, but perceive evil with good."
That's my prayer. Do you have any one that can leave this? Do you want to come to the lecture, please? Identify yourself, Jason.
So I'm Jason Knight, the current president of the impact group. Just a quick couple of comments. First off, I want to acknowledge the diversity in the room that's bringing this up. Also want to acknowledge a couple of our college students here that moved here to go to school here and have voiced concern about recent issues and have voiced concern and been active in things in the past. So it is good to see they appear. I also want to acknowledge what is said in the resolution, and it's about continued support. And I would say since the beginning of impact, we've had that support. We see that we've been given the key to the city. We see participation in the Juneteenth celebration. We see participation in our annual impact honors banquet. And then we also have the new invention of the C-Mac, which is a COF, or the Closer Advisory Council. So obviously, the African American community is hurting, and I can tell you that as an African American man, it's at home to a lot of people. It's at home to a lot of people that are, who are not even African American. So I want to say thank you for the continued support in our community.
Yes. Come to the lecture.
Hello, my name's Strolen Telling. I'm from Cookville. I moved in with my wife for her schooling, and I have a question about the resolution. What does the resolution do? Because I didn't hear any details, maybe I missed them. I'm just not sure what the resolution puts in place to help the African American community with.
My point with doing the resolution is to recognize that black lives matter, and we're not being silent, we're not being complicit. We are recognizing, recognizing that black lives matter.
First step. Are there any future plans to follow up with this?
Yes, we're going to continue to work forward with our community partners to, to ensure we keep on promoting diversity and inclusion in our community.
Okay. That'll be all for the moment.
We have a mandatory motion in a second. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Fabierto, motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes the agenda portion of our meeting. Time is in, or not? Anyone that would like to speak for non-agenda items? Do we have anyone that would like to? Council, anyone with anything? Thank you all for being here. We appreciate you being up for being involved.